Good evening, I am calling to order the Concord Township Zoning Commission meeting for Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024. We'll start out with a roll call. Heather, if you would, please.
Sure. Mr. Ruffert?
Here.
Mr. Schindler?
Here.
Mr. Terriacco?
Here.
Mr. Lingenfelter?
Present.
And Mr. Peterson.
And here. Approval of minutes, we don't have minutes tonight for the March 5th meeting, so we're going to table that till next month. We'll move on to correspondence, and I'll start with Frank on my left. Anything, Frank?
None, Mr. Chairman.
Hiram?
None, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I had nothing. Ron?
Nothing, sir.
Okay. Andy?
I just had a follow-up with the resident after our last meeting on the pole cover versus fence thing.
Oh, yeah.
Had a follow-up with him after the meeting, but nothing of any major consequence. I told him, you know, we're working on it, and when we get ready to put it on the agenda, we'll invite him in and, you know, have him give us some information if we're interested in, you know, taking a look at that. So, but that was it, nothing else.
Very good. Thank you, Andy. Zoning inspector report is next, and Hiram, for your benefit, this is something new, we've added to the agenda. Heather's going to give us an update each month as to what's happening in Concord that we should probably be aware of. So Heather, I'll turn that over to you. Anything?
Sure. Just a couple of brief things. I know we talked about last month whether or not it'd be valuable to hear about BZA cases, so just a quick update. At the March BZA meeting, the board approved a variance for a resident that has a double frontage lot. The front of the lot faces on North Point Court, and the back of his lot faces Hermitage. So it's considered a double frontage lot per our definitions, and he wanted to put a shed in his backyard, but the zoning resolution requires the same setback from both street rightaways, so 50 feet back from both Hermitage Road rightaway and 50 feet back from North Point Court. He wanted to put the shed 14 feet away from the Hermitage Road rightaway because of some topography issues and landscaping and things like that on his lot, as to which the board did approve his variance. Quick update on that. We did get a site plan review application submitted that will be in front of you guys next month. It's for the Auburn Career Center. This is another project that's part of their big master plan. If you remember, originally they were going to construct their new Board of Education offices over on the property where the Horticulture Center is and where they're building the Public Safety Center, while now they're going to take an existing building that they own on Auburn Road at 8167, which is a little white house, it's referred to as the Annex Building. They're going to put an addition on that and renovate inside and use that for their Board of Education offices. So those plans will be in front of you next month.
Is that residential? No?
It's being used now. Currently, they were using it for classrooms for training for part of that Public Safety Center program, but now that they're building that new building, those classes will be held over there. So it's already being used for school purposes.
Go back to the double frontage.
Oh, yeah.
Do they ask the neighbors all around on that BZA?
So when we do notifications for any kind of variance or conditional use permit application or administrative appeal, we do notify all the adjacent property owners of the variance request. So anyone that is adjacent to that property or across the street would have got a notice. Sometimes they call and ask for details. Sometimes they show up at the hearing and provide testimony either in favor or against. Sometimes people even get letters from their neighbors and submit that as part of their application, showing support.
Okay. But on that one going from 50 feet down to 14, they didn't get any issues?
There was no, no, there was no opposition.
Okay.
So if you think about, yeah, Hermitage Road is, you know, a county road, right? And then actually on that stretch where his lot was, there are several double frontage lots, so several rear yards that kind of face Hermitage, so it really wasn't next to someone's front kind of door, you know, where typically I think that we'd be looking for that similar setback as to not create obstructions and, you know, other people's, what would be other people's front yards, kind of, their views. And then, I don't know if of any interest, you know, I do provide for the trustees on monthly reports, like zoning permit activity, that kind of thing. So, you know, last month, our office, we did process 44 zoning permits. That brings us year-to-date to 89. Last year, we did total for the year, like, just under 400. So we do kind of keep track of some of those things, too. And most of the permits are for residential-type yard structures, fences, outbuildings, pools, those kind of things.
Very good.
But that's it.
Okay, thank you, Heather.
Just, I just have a quick question. Follow-up from last report. You had mentioned there was somebody, there were some people looking into that corner lot across from Pink's, you know, beverage there. Is there been any change with that? Has there been any further conversations or anything going on?
They had reached out to me saying, "Do you have any suggestions?" Because they were kind of, like I indicated, they were looking for some feedback, you know, of what might be suitable there. And I know I did bring that to the trustees at a staff meeting, and they didn't really have anything off the top of their heads. And, you know, I thought through our, maybe holding some future work sessions here, or if you guys had some ideas, or we could maybe come up with something. But no, he had just reached out saying, "Hey, are there any ideas?" They didn't have anything.
And then a further follow-up, has there been anything, any further activity with the Quail Hollow situation?
No, the study with the consultant with Silverload is still underway.
Right. I know the trustees did that, they did a, you know, they did a tour of the facility and kind of took pictures and posted.
Well, yeah, one of the, Morgan did go. Morgan McIntosh went on that tour of the building. He was the only trustee that was there. Yeah, the other people that attended were part of Silverload, and then Rita McMahon, the Jet Administrator, and then I believe there were a couple other individuals. They did tour the facility, so they have the information, they're putting their reports together. I believe next Friday, we have a meeting with the team to get an update from them. So I should maybe know something at the May meeting.
But nothing significant?
No, nothing right now. Yeah.
Good. Super. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. The next item on the agenda is public participation, and seeing no public, I can assume that we can move on from that to old business. And there was no old business, so we can move on to new business. And tonight, what we're going to do primarily is a work session to review zoning district uses for both commercial and residential districts. And Heather gave us some nice handouts here on various items that'll tie in nicely with this. And I don't know about you, but I brought my zoning map so you can kind of refer to that as well. But I thought maybe we would just start at the beginning here with the memo to us, the zoning commission, from Heather. And basically, she's saying, and for the purpose of getting it in the record, I'll just read this paragraph enclosed, "You'll find two spreadsheets. One contains all the existing principally permitted uses, and the other contains a list of accessory uses for all of the zoning districts except for the PUD district. Any use not listed is considered prohibited. There are also some specific uses listed in Section 602 that are also considered prohibited. Below is a summary of some of the staff's initial recommendations to the board regarding possible amendments to the resolution. The zoning commission should also think about any other uses that should be added or eliminated. Are they still relevant? Are they still desirable? And are there new uses that aren't on the list?" So, first item we have here for consideration is under agricultural or residential uses, and it talks about the possibility of eliminating adult group homes from the B1, B2 district. And if you look at the table, one of the tables that Heather gave us, you'll find that they are listed as a conditional use in B1 and B2. And actually, if you look at our zoning map, there's very little land at B1 or B2. So where we would put some of these would be awful tight anyhow. But the adult group home is on there as a conditional use. And looking at the first table there, it's right at the top, the adult, it's already a conditional use in R1 and in R4. Should it also be a conditional use in B1 and B2? And again, those are very, very tight neighborhoods. If you look at B1 and B2, I mean, there's not a lot of space where you could put an adult group home, depending on how large it was. So I'll entertain any thoughts or suggestions on that item.
If we could, go back to the paragraph. It says, "Any use not listed is considered prohibited." Do we say that anyplace? Or is it just assumed?
That's kind of a rule.
Kind of a rule?
Yeah.
Is it a rule or is it written down someplace?
That's what we've always been told by legal. If it's, if it is not in the regulations, it's considered prohibited.
Right. There's a Latin phrase that actually, and I'm, this is skeezy right now, but I will get it, and I will send it to you. But it basically means that if it is not specifically provided for, written down expressly, then it is expressly excluded. But there is a, there really is a Latin phrase about it.
Right.
Okay.
That's what we've always been told by legal, you know, as far back as I can remember. If it's not in the zoning text, then it's not, it's basically considered prohibited.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think therein lies the issue, though, Hiram, is that we have some things in our zoning from a conditional use standpoint, and the issue, and we've already run into this problem on more than one occasion within the last year, where if the conditions are met, not a whole lot we can do to stop it.
True.
You know, it pretty much is taken out of our hands. So I think the, I think the conditional use is something we really need to take a hard look at versus the permitted use. Permitted users are pretty straightforward, but it's the conditional use stuff that if they meet the conditions, then as far as the zoning commission is concerned, and even the BZA, their hands are pretty well tied as far as stopping it. So, you know, if the applicant is willing to do whatever the conditions that are stated, if they're able to check off all the boxes, then, you know, they're going to be able to move forward with their project. So I think that that's the conditional use stuff that we need to watch, because those seem to be the things that have come back to bite us, you know, in the long haul. So I think, you know, we would, it would do, we would do ourselves a lot of favors if we could ratchet down those.
Tighten them up.
Yeah.
And with that in mind, like I mentioned, we have very few business districts in Concord, contrary to what people believe that we're turning into a mentor. We're mostly residential by a big stretch. And the business districts we have are over here on Cryle Road and over on 84 in the St. Gabe area there, and then the little one over here on Girdle and Ravenna, and primarily that's it. Do we want to use that, or would we want to use that for adult group home when we could have a legitimate business in there?
No.
You know, so.
No. I agree with the, I agree with the comment that it's more residential in nature and would be better suited in a residential setting. I agree with that observation.
Why were they put in B1 and B2 to begin with? Do we know?
Only Frank would know.
Sorry, Frank. I don't know. Frank's got me by a couple years, but not that much. I mean, him and I are pretty close. So. What, it usually says on the text, I mean, what's the, what is, what is that? What's the designation on the adult B? What is that?
B1 and B2.
B1, B2?
Yeah. And while Andy's looking for that, it could be mentioned here that Heather points out that one exists in the B2 district, there's one that exists in the B2 district, the Lake Jogga Recovery Center is already there. So that's already in place. And then BZA just approved one in the B1 district crossroads. Where is that located?
On Auburn Road, across from Red Hawk.
Oh, across from Red, oh, up in there.
The building that used to be the daycare.
Hmm. Oh, the daycare center.
So there's a little bit, you know, you do have to kind of think about creating non-conforming uses. I would say that the Jogga Recovery Center really doesn't have the ability to expand based on what they already have there, and they're already at their maximum number of, you know, residents that they can put in that facility. Now, the other one, the crossroad ones, crossroads, they haven't even occupied yet. So I almost wish maybe this would have already happened. But, so there is something to consider, though, if you're going to take things out, you know, about creating nonconformities and what that does, you know, to businesses that are already here.
They'd be kind of grandfathered in, wouldn't they?
Yeah, yes. They would be, you know, lawful nonconforming, continue on in accordance with our nonconforming use section of the zoning resolution. Yes.
So we've already got two that are in our business districts. In my opinion, I don't think we'd want any more. And taking this conditional use out of there would enable us to block that in a sense.
Say, "No more."
Yeah. You agree?
Yes. Yes, I do.
Well, I think, you know, and then looking at the history, you know, you mentioned some of these things, you know, I mean, if you look at some of the history on the business regulations, business districts, I mean, some of this stuff has been in place for over 20 years.
Sure.
It's been, you know, since it's been revised and/or amended. So, I mean, I think we're probably, you know, we're probably a little out of date on some of this. So if we wanted to go back and really, you know, do some forensics as to why it was put in there, it would be probably pretty difficult to go, you know, you're talking 10, 15 years ago, some of this stuff was done. So, you know, you might, that would, I think that answers the question as to the timing and when this was allowed, so.
Right. And just to kind of add on to that, so the purpose statements, too, that we already have in the resolution regarding, you know, all these different zoning districts, which I added, you know, this was a great exercise for me to actually combine all the different residential and residential districts into this spreadsheet for you, just because I thought it was, I don't know if we've ever really looked at the entire township and all the districts, like collectively. I mean, we have 16 zoning districts, and that does not include the two planned unit development ones.
Yeah.
And of those 16, we have 11 different commercial districts and five residential. And, you know, some districts have been added for various reasons, like when the hospital came in, the Gateway Business, Gateway Health, and there are some districts that have been on the books for decades, that, and I even know in our comprehensive plan update in 15, there were some recommendations, like, "Take a look at the B2 district, you know, are those uses still compatible with the residential that's nearby?" And even, you know, asking us to look at the B1 district down at Ravenna and Girdle Road. And so there are things that have changed in the township over time that we haven't necessarily adjusted in our zoning. So like, when we had the, like, adult group homes, we probably didn't have any, we didn't have, like, the skilled nursing facilities or the assisted livings that we now have over off of Auburn Road. So there have definitely been some changes in uses in the township, which I think.
Yeah, on your map, you're almost running out of color code schemes to add another district.
Well, yeah, and the districts are starting to blend together, I feel like. So like, you know, like B1 and BX are very similar now, and I know I'm getting a little bit out of order, but, you know, kind of putting this together is kind of, I think, will help us moving forward, you know, like, potentially, do we need all of these districts? Would maybe, would somehow this lead to some kind of rezoning potentially or elimination of a district because they're so similar? I don't really know at this point. But it was brought up, you know, even at the comp plan time, like, with some of the BX land on Cryle, you know, should that remain BX? Should it change? You know, how does that impact the uses that are allowed there or existing there?
So, given that, how do you recommend we go through this? If we agree that, just this first one, we take that conditional use out of there, we don't want to vote on that tonight. We want to put a list together and then put them all together.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I would just sit here and mark some things up. We'd come back next month, and, you know, this is not even from the zoning, you know, this is extracted out of the resolution, so, yeah.
Well, I think we're in agreement. Andy, you?
Yeah, we're just, I mean, this is a work session. I mean, we're not obligated to make any decisions or make any votes. What we're doing today is trying to determine what we want to put on the agenda for a public hearing and making some serious resolution changes.
Okay, so let's say this one, we're unanimously in agreement that we're going to take that, remove the conditional use.
Right.
For those business districts. Remove the B1 and B2. Okay. That's the only one.
While we're at it.
Yeah. Oh, you want another one?
No, no. I'm just asking questions here. We have R1, R3, R4, R6. It's okay in 1 and 4. Can it be okay in 3 and 6? Because we're basically saying it's going to be okay in a residential area, in a zoning area, R1 and R3. How about the other two?
Well, then we have PUD and Conservation Districts, which aren't listed here as such, that have to be considered. We wouldn't want it there, probably.
I don't think we even want to bring that up in there.
Okay. But you would talk about adding it to 6 or 8?
No, I'm just asking. 3 and 6. Ooh, and 8. Okay. 3, 6, and 8. The Rs.
See anything that would be detrimental there, Heather, from?
Well, I would have concern with R3, being that the way our R3 district is, it's a condominium type community, the private streets, condominium ownership. I really don't envision anyone doing a project in an R3 would probably incorporate that kind of use. And just, just as a reminder, too, the adult group home is basically a large home facility where you can have up to 16 individuals living there, that might be there for a short amount of time, and then they might leave, you know, they're maybe there for a few months, and then they're gone. So it's, it has potential to, if you tried to fit it into an existing neighborhood to maybe stand out or be more impactful, which is probably why we have it as a conditional use.
Yeah, because if you look at our map, we basically have, we have six neighborhoods that are R3, and they're all condos, and they're all pretty dense.
Yeah.
So I don't think a group home of any type would probably fit in that. And when you look at R6, Hiram, that's basically Mount Royal and Majesty Lane up across from you.
Okay, okay.
That's the only R6 on the map, that neighborhood.
I don't think that would, that would go there at all.
No, right. So, and then as far as 8, that's basically the area around Little Mountain Golf Course. And I don't think they'd want that there, or it would fit there.
Yeah. Meaning the lots in the golf course area?
This whole chunk of land that comprises the golf course and the streets around it is, that's our only R8.
I've got extra copies of the zoning map, too, I brought.
Okay. Instead of me pulling it out of my book, that would be great. Thank you.
Sure. Is it November 22 is the most current one?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I have. Yeah, so see, this area here, the olive green is the only R8 that we have. So I don't see it going in there. So I think it's probably okay like it is with R1 and R4.
You sure about R8? Because even though the streets are there, there's a lot of other open area that.
Keep in mind, that's a large ravine, though. That's a huge ravine between there and Discovery Lane. You know, just off the golf course, it's straight down into a deep valley there.
Okay. I'm just asking a question.
No, that's fair. And there's a driving range down there that doesn't show on here in a clubhouse and.
Okay.
So maybe just 1 and 4 stays like it is?
Yep, that's, that's good.
Anybody have any more discussion of that particular item? Okay. Let's move on to second paragraph, then, which is commercial and office uses. And number one says, "Consider defining and breaking out uses that could fall under personal services or retail, such as tattoo parlors, vape shops, internet sweepstakes, cafe, and so forth." Little odds and ends businesses like that that aren't even mentioned on here. Would we want to break that out and add those as categories that don't exist on our list today? And there may be other things that we're not even thinking of, too.
I'm sure. And I'm sure we can't come up with all of them either.
Yeah.
Say, "Such as, but not limited to."
Right.
Well, the state's still arguing about, you know, smoking marijuana places being able to sell.
That's already outlawed.
That's already outlawed.
Yeah, the letter that was in our packet, the trustees have put a memo out on that, right? So that won't come into play. Is it possible to come up with a category that would say miscellaneous small service businesses such as, and define that as a category, instead of trying to list every little business that might be out there? And then if something new came along, we could categorize it as a miscellaneous new small service business, instead of trying to think of every name?
I've seen some communities have added things into the resolution, like, that allows somebody to give some kind of discretion on a use that might be like a similar use to something but not specifically permitted. I don't know what our legal counsel would say about that. Like, I know, like, Pinsville Township has a process where, like, the trustees determine whether or not something is a similar use, and if they agree it is, then that person goes to the BZA, I think. And then the BZA issues like a conditional use permit. And I've seen other places where, like, the zoning inspector has the discretion. But there's different thought processes, I think, on that.
I don't know that we have a category that we could say it would be similar to now, right?
Yeah.
I mean, looking down the list, we've got a lot of categories, for sure.
Yeah.
But I don't know how you'd put in diverse small service businesses, like the examples you gave, what you would say they were similar to on this list.
Well, and right now, the bottom, the bottom line, personal services.
Yeah, personal services.
Oh, but not limited to.
But not limited to.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we could put just, et cetera.
Right. So right now, Mr. Peterson, yeah, so tattoo parlors, they would fall under, my interpretation of that right now is that falls under a personal service.
Yes.
So that's how the tattoo parlor that's over at Concord Plaza was approved. I approved that as a personal service.
That's right, there's one.
Now, there, and there's another tattoo place over off of Johnny Cake, too, that you wouldn't even really know about, over at 9930, where the little office complex is.
Okay.
But I do know some communities want to specifically, you know, regulate tattoo parlors and, you know, rather than just under, you know, a personal service. If they want to try to restrict it or limit it in any kind of manner of the way we have it right now, we would not be able to restrict or limit it. Same thing with, like, the vape shops. I know a lot of other communities, we're not experiencing it right now, but we could, you know, an influx of, you know, vape shops wanting to.
So when we put the two tattoo parlors in that are currently in, they came to you for a zoning ruling on that, and you fit it in. Is that the category you used?
Yeah, I approved them under a personal service.
I would.
Yeah.
Okay. So, so would we just add that, add these uses as examples in this category?
If you were, if you were fine with just keeping them under personal service and didn't feel like you needed to regulate them differently, then we could do nothing, or we could, or we could add it in as an example.
Well, I think tattoo parlors are already here. I don't know that we have any vape shops, do we?
We do have a smoke shop now. It falls under retail with an enclosed building over at Concord Plaza by the, the side where the Japanese noodle shop is, where the Mexican restaurant used to be.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
On that side, by the Universal Auto Care, I think it's.
By La Mesa, where Biagio's Donuts used to be.
Yeah.
Okay. So we've already got that in there. Do we have any internet cafes?
No, not to my knowledge.
What do they, I'm sorry, I'm naïve as all get out. What do they do in an internet sweepstakes cafe? Drink coffee and get on the web. Is that it?
It's like a. It's like a, um, it's kind of like a bar, but you go to it and you gamble on these like machines.
Okay, okay.
I know we don't have any of those here, we don't have some of the issues that some other communities have with those kind of facilities, like taking over their, their commercial kind of areas. But, you know, to, to prevent something like that twenty years from now, you know, we could consider regulating them separately. If we didn't wanna allow them.
Okay, uh, along those lines, what about, you know, what's big now, starting last year with sports gambling?
Yeah.
I mean, it's on television constantly. Are there places, actually businesses that do that or is it all online?
I'm not aware of.
I mean.
Establishments that just do that.
Be a sports gambling facility, that'd be legal.
Isn't that this? Isn't it all on the internet?
I don't know.
Yeah, you couldn't do it that way. You could do it that way, right. But we don't have any of those? That you know of.
No, I mean, I don't know, like, do bars do that? Do they get a license to be able to do that within their facility? Like, I don't know if restaurants and bars do that and like we wouldn't know, we wouldn't really regulate it.
The only thing they have is Keno. Keno.
Okay.
Yeah, they're most, most of the bars that I'm aware of where they allow any kind of gambling is they've got Keno and that's state regulated.
And of course lottery.
Right.
Yeah. We wouldn't get involved in.
No.
You know, regulating that.
Well, now you can take your iPhone and gamble just anywhere, you can sit down wherever, I would assume. You know, while your wife's shopping, you can sit there and do gambling, that's.
True.
On the news today, I was hearing about there, there's a lot of things now about that gambling situation like that. That they're becoming addictive, they're having, you know, problems of that, taking effect in our, with the younger generation. Allowing to do that and they're becoming addicted, just like drug addiction. Now they got gambling addiction that's taken skyrocketing, cause they can do it so easily, you know?
Oh, I can definitely see.
I saw that coming. Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we all did.
Yeah. So if we follow this line of thinking that these type of business would fit in that category. If we go across the, the, the chart here then and say, well, are these the appropriate places to put it? The first one it's permitted in is B one and that would seem logical. But not B two. And then it's of course B X and C and G, G B.
And T H C.
Okay, so we've got, it's, it's allowed in Town Hall Commons right here where we're sitting. And it's allowed in.
I don't know why.
Uh, Gateway Business, which would be, uh, over by the hospital and along, uh. Forty-four. And it would be in C which is Capital Business District. I don't see it fitting in there necessarily, but I guess it could.
What?
Capital, these little shops like this, a tattoo parlor in the Capital District? Or an internet cafe or miscellaneous business? I guess we have, what we have are five districts that these, these things are permitted in right now. Are they the appropriate ones to. Consider future businesses of this type to be in? Since we're talking about that particular category.
Well, what are we, where?
First one is B one, right?
B one is red.
Yeah, red. Now, those are our business districts, that's Crow Road.
Four.
Crow Road, eighty-four, um, girdled Ravenna, uh, down around the Red Hawk a little bit. So I think that, that's a natural fit there in a business district, right? It's a business.
Business, yeah.
Yeah.
So the next category, B two, uh, and again, our B two district. Is our general business district and that's kind of along where we are here almost. It's both sides of the Town Hall District. All the way down to, um. Quarter ways down, along Ravenna Road, right? That's B two. General business. It's not permitted in B two, these things are not currently. Do we wanna change that or leave it like it is? Everyone see where B two is? Right here, next to the Town Hall District, along here.
Yeah.
To our left and our right as, as we sit right now.
Right along where?
Here's the Town Hall District and it's.
Those two.
That way and that way.
Yeah, that works.
You'd allow that in, in this area? So then we would add a, add a permit?
To, to B two.
To B two? Everyone agree with that?
Yeah, I think that would, I think that would fit. I guess the only thing always bothers me is when I see that word, et cetera. That could cover a lot of different things that might possibly be objectionable now in the future.
So does that go against, if it's not written, it's not? If it's not written, it's not permitted. But does et cetera cover that?
Et cetera covers that.
Yeah.
Et cetera covers that, I think, turning with dollars, that's probably the case.
Well, and then, you know, the definition of personal services does include or similar activities after the list, right? So, I mean, I think an argument could be made that something could fit as a personal service, but I know we're talking, um, you know, about. Where these, these would go, but, um, and if you look at the purpose though really quick for B two. Versus B one, it's to provide a general business district that provides an opportunity for non-intrusive trade business services. And wholesale business that service a regional marketplace, whereas B one actually lists and to serve personal services.
Good point.
Yeah, okay.
But.
So is, is that, do you think that's the reason why we don't have it in B two?
Probably. Probably.
Yeah.
I couldn't tell you why we don't because.
Well, but, but it fits, to me, it fits why it's not in B two then.
So leave it like it is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's say we do that, we go down, you know, the next is, uh, B X, which is Business Interchange, which is.
Red again.
Red again.
Different red.
Slightly different red, yeah, which is basically over a Gold Court area. Gold Court and down by, uh, eighty-four lumber, those are B X. And I guess Drug Mart would be in B X. Or not? Yeah, would.
Yes.
It would be.
Drug Mart's B X, so is, um, the Crowe Crossing where Starbucks and Chipotle, that's all B X as well.
But. Further up, like, uh, where Lucky's is, that's, that's not B X, that's B one.
B one.
Yeah.
Yep.
So there's a fine line there.
Yeah.
Right in, on Crowe Road between B one and B X. But it is currently permitted in B X, I mean, these types of things that were on the list, so.
To me it fits.
Well. Tattoo parlor next to a lumberyard seems a little funny, but.
Well, each one's does their own thing of course, but I can't see how they'd be interfering with one another, really.
But currently a photo studio could go next to eighty-four lumber.
Yeah.
Or a shoe repair shop.
Sure.
So, those are services that could be there.
Yeah.
I think, I think, I think what you have to do is you have to look at the area.
Yeah, I know.
And think about what's there already.
Yeah.
And how that's going to change, if it's going to change. As you move away from Gold Court, heading south on Crowe Road and along forty-four there. There's, there's not a lot after you get past Drug Mart.
Right.
You know, you've got Concord Motorsports, you've got eighty-four lumber, and then you've got that other, you know, you've got B B Bradley and a couple other businesses.
And of course the ice cream, ice cream.
Well, yeah, you got the ice cream parlor, but that's a part, that's a different district though, that's, that's part of the, that's.
Oh, it's on the other side, you're right.
Yeah, that's part of the Cap- what is it, the Capital?
That's Capital.
Yeah, which, which is, I think those fit in with the general, um.
Yeah.
Intent of what that was supposed to be.
Okay.
Where I think when you, if you go. Past those areas, I mean, there's not a whole lot there, so, you know, to. It would have, there would have to be a, there would have to be some sort of a plaza or some sort of a, of a, an area that would be, need to, need to be developed. That would be like where, like Crowe Crossing is. In order to house a photography shop or a tattoo parlor or those types of businesses. Because are you gonna build a building, a standalone building for a photography shop? Probably not, you know?
But Andy, the, 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 Gold Court is also the same district, so I mean, even though. I understand what you're saying down there towards eighty-four lumber, but even further up north, past B B Bradley, Gold Court, Holiday Inn. All of that is also same district.
Right.
So it go, it, it could go in there on Gold Court or any of those places.
Right, but I'm, my, my point is, is that.
Yeah, I know.
Once you go south of that area in general, there's, there's a lot less opportunity. For a small business to open shop, you know, because there's really no, I mean, you'd have to build.
Buy that whole lot.
You'd have to build, you'd have to buy a lot and build a facility, you know, and then.
Right.
So that, that, we would, it would be more, to me, it would lend itself more to a, we need more, more retail space or more, you know. Development in that vein than what's there now, because what, I mean, where are you gonna put a tattoo parlor, south of, south of Drug Mart? Where do you put it?
Well, how about in the Drug Mart facility?
Right.
An open spot.
Right.
A, a place opens up, it's about for sale or whatever.
You know.
And then some, a tattoo parlor for going there.
The little, if the donut shop or the little, the salon that's there or, where you got, be, what be, you know, you got, uh.
You got Beerhead, but who knows?
You know, so, but I mean, as far as anything beyond that, I mean, where, where are you gonna go for, for south of that building? There's really nothing there. The next facility after that is what is, um, that would be the, um.
Motorsports.
Motors, Concord Motorsports, right?
No, there's another one right beside.
True Value.
Whatever.
Yeah, the Crow.
Well, that's, yeah, well, that's the Concord Motorsports, that's True Value, that's the.
That's all one piece.
Hardware store, that's all there.
And there's a rec center behind Beerhead.
But that's behind, back behind Pizza Roto.
Right.
And all that is back there. You know, so, but, but then, then you've got that open lot to where, where, you know, where the hotel is, right?
Right.
And then, and then supposedly that we, we approved the hotel, another hotel, but is anything ever happening with that or?
That was the Hilton.
Yeah, we approved that, I mean.
Is that a Hilton?
Yeah.
The one that's not there?
Hilton. Yeah, we went through all the, we went through all the machinations of the shared driveway and the shared parking lot and all that craziness. And everybody was all up in arms about that and then they didn't, you know, we, we, I thought we came up with a pretty good conclusion with that.
In front of the Holiday Inn, that lot's still open.
Right. Well, that was gonna be.
That was the other hotel.
Well, that was, no, that was gonna be, uh.
Car wash?
That was gonna be, what's his name?
Classic, Jim Brown.
Jim Brown's car wash, the classic.
That's right.
And we approved that and he backed out.
Yep.
Yeah, and then it was, then there's that lot that's across the street, so there, there are some development opportunities there. That I think make more sense, but as we go, as we go further south and you get past Concord Motorsports. It's pretty sparse and, you know, and the, I think the lots are bigger and I think the, the available. The, the, the convenience of opening up a shop like that really diminishes, so.
They would have to have like a plaza that they can continue on down.
Yeah, that's what I'm, you need, it's a storefront, you know, uh, uh, most tattoo parlors are storefronts, most.
Yeah.
Yeah, most of the, you know, most of those types of facilities are, they're storefronts, they're not standalone buildings.
They're permitted in B, or they're permitted in, uh, B X today.
Right.
Leave it.
Leave it.
I would think, just leave it, cause they are permitted.
Yes, yeah, I would.
Yes, sir.
And the same thing in Capital.
Yeah.
I can see the same thing happening in Capital.
And the next category they're, they're permitted in is the Capital. I don't know about that.
Yeah, now I'd be, now I'd be a little bit more, I'd be a little bit more concerned about what goes into, into Capital. Than what I would be with B, B one or B X, or B two, B X. I think, you know, B two, you know, and, and if, and if you, if you go back and, if you go back into the intent of the B two. That was, you know, B one is more restricted retail. B two was more like wholesale type stuff, you know, like, those were those, the, the concept behind the B two at the time, when I remember us dealing with that. It was landscape companies, you know, wholesale, you know, that type of thing versus, you know, small business.
Yeah.
You know, in the, in the, in the, in the B two versus B one. So, you know, do you want, do we wanna start mixing and mixing those uses together? I would say no. I wouldn't, I wouldn't support that. I wouldn't be in favor of, of, um, of those types of things in B two. And I wouldn't be, and I don't think it's a good idea in Capital, to be honest with you.
It's in there now, but we could always take that out.
I would, I would support removing it from Capital. I'm okay with B X, I'm okay with B one.
B two, no.
You know, B two, no, um, Capital, no.
And then Gateway.
And T H C, I would, you know, I mean, I, you know, Town Hall Center's a, I don't think that, that fits Town Hall Center either. I would, I would eliminate it from Town Hall Center.
Eliminate it or make it conditional? Eliminate it probably.
No, I don't wanna go down the conditional road.
Yeah, so. Let's say we xed it out of. We in agreement to this?
Why, why take it out of Capital?
Yeah.
Well, that's supposed to be someday the Town Center. Down around the.
So, so we're gonna wait until Town Center comes in and gets all developed to put one in?
No. You just remove it.
Just remove it. Remove what?
Remove the, that.
If we take it out, just saying, take it out of the Capital District.
As a permitted use.
Right, but when we did that, we'd also be taking out hair care, dry cleaning, shoe repair, photography studios, things like that. Which might be okay in there.
Well, you know, so then, so then that. That's another slippery slope.
Yeah, I know.
You know, so do we, so do we wanna start naming businesses instead of et cetera?
No.
You know, do we wanna start, cause boy, that, that list can get awfully long.
Yes, it can, yeah, yes, it can, and you're not, you, you're never gonna capture them all.
No, you're not.
That's why you have et cetera in there, but.
That's why I said et cetera, I don't like that word.
And at some point in time, we're gonna have to define et cetera.
That's right.
So then, so then if you, well, then the only way that we could fix that would be to make it a conditional use. And then we would have to. And then be able. Establish some, some stricter conditions that they would have to adhere to.
You're right, because if they met the current conditions, they'd get in.
Well, there's no, there are no conditions, it's a permitted use. They can come in and they can just, they can set up shop and go.
Right.
There's nothing, there's nothing to stop them, it's like a residential, you know, it's like a residential, it's like R one. I mean, if you got, if, if it falls within the guidelines of R, if the definitions of R one, you get your plat and you start building houses. I mean, you don't have to really worry about it. If we, if we can make it a, if it's a permitted use, then it's permitted, period, end of story. If it's conditional, then they've gotta meet certain conditions in order for it to be approved. So at least we have, I think, if it's a conditional use, we have a little more control over it than we do if it's permitted.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so to me, if you wanted to take that and make that change, I would support making it a, a conditional use. And then maybe putting some, setting the bar a little higher for the conditions that would keep us out of trouble.
Keep in mind, the conditions would have to be applicable to all these different kinds of businesses.
Right, right. Yeah, you're gonna, but, but at least, you've got some, we've got, we've got a little bit of control for what happens versus just.
I guess you'd have to make it to the least common denominator is to, how you set the conditions up, you know, that.
So.
You know.
The, the, the Town Hall, as it was five years ago or whenever it was. It was supposed to be park your car, come in and shop, something like Legacy Village from what I heard. And, and there are all, there are a lot of personal services.
That's true.
In Legacy Village.
Right, and we pictured that at the time.
Yeah, that's what, that's what the concept was.
Yeah. New community center.
Would a, would a tattoo parlor fit in Legacy Village?
Probably, they wouldn't desire it, but. But I don't know, how do you restrict it?
Well.
There's your. There's your conditional use. I mean.
So, you know, what, what, what kind of stuff do we want, or do we envision in the Capital District?
Legal offices, we had, we had retail.
Yeah, and isn't that personal service? A photography studio would be great in.
Be perfect.
Yes.
But there's a big difference between a photography studio and a, and a dry cleaning place, let alone a tattoo parlor.
So now we go. A, B, C, D, E, so now we're gonna categorize all of these ones.
Yeah, but, but that's only based on our opinions, right?
I, I know, so do we. If, if we say no to a tattoo parlor. As a personal service. Then we can't have anything in Capital District. We can't have a photography, we can't have a hair care or a shoe repair in Capital. Wasn't that the intent of the Town Hall?
To draw people is to have a variety of businesses.
Right, so if we don't want. Tattoo parlor, then we gotta take it out of Capital. We have, have to take all that stuff out of Capital, not just a tattoo parlor. Now we're using that.
Or a vape shop for that.
Or vape, yeah, or whatever, yeah, well, that's a personal service, but we already have two tattoos, are we gonna get another tattoo in Capital? I don't know.
What's your thoughts Heather on that versus the, the conditional versus just permitted?
Personal services? I, personal services really should probably remain permitted uses, I mean, they tend to not have. Potential negative impacts on adjoining properties and we're not talk, we're talking about. You know, a hair care, like a salon, okay, so. We're not gonna have trucks and fumes and outdoor storage and, and things of that kinda nature. That might need additional review by the B Z A. But if they're, like I said at the, kind of at the beginning, if there are uses that fall under this category that you wanna limit. Then you probably need to peel it out, define it separately and then say where you wanna allow them or not allow them. So if you, if you have concerns about tattoo parlors.
Make it a secondary.
We could add that as a separate. Give it a definition and then put it in the table, where do you want them or where do you not want them?
We could create a new category.
If that's, if that's something you wanna regulate separately from these larger categories such as personal services and retail.
Thoughts on that, guys?
I would not be opposed to having some of this. Second tier, if you wanna call it, in another category.
Wanna leave it at that for now, a potential second tier?
Yeah, I, I would.
Second tier category, maybe?
A new category.
What do you think, Andy?
I don't know.
Second tier services?
I don't know, I think.
I don't think I'd call it that, but that's.
No, but I mean, we'd have to come up with a nice name, but. There are some businesses that would be less desirable in a Capital Center, and it could be a, not just these, there could be a lot of businesses that you really. You know, wouldn't want in a Capital Center. Like Legacy Village, picture that, I'm sure, how do they restrict what goes in there?
I don't know. Have you been by there lately?
No, no.
There's been a lot of places closed. I was through there a couple of weeks ago, just, I was in a neighborhood, so I drove through there. I was surprised how many places were gone.
Well, let's look at, you know, look at Ca, just look at the Ca, Capital, for instance. Okay, if you drop down the list of Capital. Your permitted uses are agricultural use, which makes me kinda scratch my head.
Yeah, why is that? Agriculture's everywhere, it's in every district.
I'm not, yeah, it's, yeah, agricultural's a little bit odd. But then you got administrative business and professional office, which I think is fine. Then you've got, then you drop down bank, financial institutions, which is permitted, which is fine.
In Capital?
And then you've got now, conditional would be bed and breakfast, okay, that would be a conditional use, which I think is okay. Uh, business services, including mailing and copy centers, is, is permitted, that's okay. Then the next conditional is child or adult daycare center, that one bothers me a little bit.
But it's conditional.
But it bothers me a little bit.
Because it's conditional.
Right, and then you drop down to hotels, motels, which I think makes sense. Indoor commercial recreation makes sense. Um, publishing, printing and bindery makes sense. Medical, dental and, you know, office space makes sense, membership, sports and fitness club fits. Then you got, um, you know, meeting and banquet facilities and clubs is conditional, okay? Right? Or no? That's permitted. And then you're, then, uh, micro brewery, micro distillery or micro winery would be conditional. And I think, so I, I don't, you know, and then the personal services is permitted. So if you look at that, I mean, i- if you go down that list, there's only, there's only one, two, there's only two, three conditional use.
But there's more on the second page too, Andy.
Yeah, restaurants, which is, you know, that, that's all well and good, conditional.
Retail establishments.
Establishments within an enclosed building, now, there, there, there's. Okay, look, look, think about retail establishments within an enclosed building. You know, what, what, what is, what, what would, what would define that?
We do have a definition. An establishment engaged in the selling of goods or merchandise within an enclosed building to the general public. For personal or household consumption, which is open to the general public during regular business hours. And which has display areas that are designed and laid out to attract the general public.
Vape shop. That's a vape shop, right?
It's a dress shop.
But I'm just saying, you talk about vape shop, that doesn't necessarily, vape shop doesn't necessarily need to fall in, in, under. The personal services, that I think, you know, retail establishments within an enclosed building would, that would be a vape, that, I think a vape shop fits. Actually, I think a vape shop probably fits that more than personal services. You know, retail establishment within, cause what's, what's personal service about a vape shop? That's just, that's retail, you're going in a vape shop to buy cartridges for your vape. Pen, you know? Or tobacco, I would imagine, other tobacco related, smoke related products. That's really kind of a retail establishment versus a personal service.
It's a retail.
Like a liquor store inside of, like, the Great Lakes Mall, you know, or something like that.
So then we drop down and we go to studios for instruction.
Theater.
Right? Theaters, good. Urgent care, medical clinic, okay? And we go down, drop down to church or place of worship as a conditional use.
Community center.
Below that, community center.
Cause we talked of building a new community center in the town center.
Community park and playground, community, is that community, or is that golf, what, is that golf course?
No, uh, government.
Which one is that? Government and public use, okay? Library, a museum. Is conditional. And then surface extraction of sand, gravel and other earth materials.
That's on Heather's list to talk about.
That's gotta go.
Union Sands.
That's, I'm a big no on that one, I'm a big okay with the deletion of that one. And then innovative site. P D would be, that's kind of an unusual conditional as well.
Capital, yeah.
That's the plan development that would potentially provide the tool for the town center.
Right.
Which, um, I know we've looked at those uses.
It's all by itself.
So.
So we're okay with personal services in Capital. And we're saying.
Well, depending on what they are.
Well, that's the et cetera.
Okay.
And keep in mind, really, like, personal services is defined, and et cetera is not in the definition. So, that I think was just, um, um, just something that you had listed right in your.
What's the definition of, do you have, first, do we have?
I have it.
Services defined?
Yeah, so, any enterprise conducted for gain that primarily offers, offers services to the general public. Such as shoe repair, watch repair, barber shop, salons, dry cleaners, photography studios. Or similar activities. So it doesn't say et cetera, it does say or similar activity, which is kind of what Heather was talking about a little bit in other jurisdictions. They have these things called similar uses, so that because it is really hard to go through an entire list of what personal services might be. Or, or retail might be, um, to call it these similar activities. But again, there's nothing necessarily in our resolution that says, hey, what's a similar activity and who, who decides that? But it sounds like it really could be the zoning inspector.
Right, I agree.
Right.
I agree. The zoning inspector says, that's a similar use, that's not a similar use. I, I think you're right, Andy, that.
So scratch the word et cetera on the charger.
Go over.
Yeah, I think the vape store would fall under the retail establishments within an enclosed building.
Right.
And I think that's appropriate. So. And, and again, I think you just look, if you look at the intent of zoning district. And you look at the location and what's there now and what's not there now. Well, I think that has a lot, I think that determines a lot where, you know, where these businesses are gonna go if they come, you know? Now I could see a tattoo parlor in, in the, in the Capital District. You know, I could see that as a, as a, as a storefront in a, in a string of buildings, you know? I mean, just look at this, think of downtown Willoughby, go down, go to, go down the road on downtown, in downtown Willoughby. You know, well, you get, there's, I think there's a couple of tattoo parlors on, you know, on the, on the stretch there in downtown. One or two, I think, you got a couple of coffee shops, you know, kinda at the end, Wild Goose, you know, you got at the end there in the corner. Old Arabica, you know, and across the street, you got a big, you know, so there's, I think that you, that to me is more. When I think of, when I think of those, when I think of storefronts and, and retail services within an enclosed building and or. Personal services, I think those would fit, that's what I would envision, you know, being a part of that process, you know? So.
So you're saying identify the vape shop in retail? Is that what you're saying? Well, we didn't identify anything in that enclosed.
I just don't think, I, I think a vape shop would fit more into the. No, not, not personal services, but a retail.
If you go back to what, what Heather put down here, it said. Could fall under personal services or retail.
Right.
And I think we're signing on retail.
Now, can we, can we prohibit? Internet cafe? What's the, what's the, what's the rules there? We can't, we can't prohibit it, can we?
You know, it's funny, I feel like ten years ago, that's what Tom Trips were doing, actually, we're. Actively prohibiting. Sweepstakes cafes. Uh, I don't know though, now, I'm, I, I'm not sure if something has changed, so I'd have to look, but I, I know that definitely, literally a decade ago.
I'm just, I would be, you know, I would be curious as to what the, what the proliferation of. Internet cafes are anymore, I mean, that was, that was a big thing a while ago, but it's, you know, I mean, with the. With the advance of the internet and all the other things that are going in that direction, I mean. What do you need a place to go sit for? I mean, you, you can do it, do it on your phone, you can do it on your iPad, you know, you can do it in your kitchen. You don't have to do it, you have to get in the car and drive somewhere and sit.
They do if they wanna get with their friends and have some drinks and they.
Becomes socialization.
It's a social thing.
But I'm just curious, I mean, I would, I, I, are they, are there still a lot of internet cafes around? I mean, are they even, are they still a thing? I know for a while, they were like, really smoking hot, I mean, they, there was, that's, they were popping up everywhere. You know, but then, then it just, it seems like that's.
There's quite a few in the community where I live, to the point where they passed a moratorium on them, so I don't know if it. Kinda depends on, you know, obviously the economics and the demographics of the community. So, but I'd be willing to maybe take a look and see, like, are those still expanding? And maybe we can take a look at whether or not that's something we can even still prohibit if we need to.
I would, I would fall on the side of prohibition on that versus, versus regulation. I just don't see any value in it. From a community standpoint.
Wouldn't we even have to identify it?
I think you would, I think you would wanna define it. And then just not list it.
We fought this battle with the sexually oriented business a few years back, we talked about it, and I looked on here, we put them in the airport district. I don't know if Connie knows that, but. That's where we put it, so. We said we can't, we can't ban it, but we could make it in an area that's.
You really have to drive to get to.
Yeah, yeah, it's not gonna be.
It's not gonna be conducive.
Right.
Well, we can do the same thing again.
Two parlors in the airport?
Well, no, no, no. If, if we put it in the retail. We're basically prohibiting it in the Capital. That's what we're doing.
No. Because it's permitted in Capital, retail establishments within an enclosed building, which Andy pointed out, it is permitted.
Now, is an internet cafe technically, is that, would that be considered a personal service? Or would that be considered a re, a re, a retail establishment within an enclosed building? I mean, what's retail about an internet cafe?
Nothing.
Nothing, right?
They're not selling.
If you look at the definition of, of retail, it, it doesn't, an internet cafe doesn't really check any boxes.
They are selling the chance to win.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I mean, personal services, what's, what, what's in it for personal service, what do you get, what, what personal services are you gaining from an internet cafe?
Gambling?
But it's not a personal service, is it really? Is gambling considered a personal service? I mean, that considered a shoe repair shop or, you know, salon. That's personal service, dry cleaner, but internet cafe? Can, can we prohibit them, counselor?
I don't know, that's what I need to find out, it sounds like.
I'd like, I'd be interested to know.
Sure, it sounds like the Ohio General Assembly, again, about a decade ago, passed many rules regulating internet.
Right.
Uh, sweepstakes cafe, because of the fact that they're, you're giving out cash, you're giving money, you're giving, there's some exchange there, um. But honestly, it was literally a decade ago, so I need to make sure what the current rules are.
I'd be interested to see what you can find out on that. I would, I would fall on the side of prohib, prohibiting it, if, if we're, if we can. If we can't, then I would ratchet it down to a point where it would just be miserable to consider opening up a business like that. You know, just make it, just make it economically unfeasible. That's, that would be our out, I mean, that would be our only out, just make it so difficult that a person's just not gonna bother, you can go somewhere else, right?
Like we did Sheetz.
Correct. We saw how far that got us.
No place.
But if we, if we, if we, if we can deal with it now, then we won't deal with it later, right? Better to deal with it in advance than to have to deal with it after the fact. It's just like car washes, yeah, I'm just cur- Yeah, I'm just curious about how many, how mu- how, how much more do we want? Car washes, you know, do we have enough car washes, do we wanna remove that as a conditional use in certain districts as well? You know, I mean, we got car washes pop, you know, we got car washes coming around, I mean, how many more do we need? You need more? I know, Rich, you think we can't, we can't have enough.
Yeah, I think three, four more would be good. I'd like to have one good one right now, we don't have one.
And I'm okay with that.
Don't you ever wash your car?
Yeah, I go to Zappi's.
Yeah.
On a matter of avenue.
It's the best place. You know, as we're talking about this, cause you can see where one little business, whether it's an internet cafe or whatever, really takes you down a, a long path, we'll never get through this.
No way.
What I was thinking, what might be a better way to approach this, cause Heather did this nice chart, is just take a district at a time, or two districts in, in a meeting, and in between, as homework assigned more or less, you could go down there, it's pretty easy. When Andy led us through the Capitol District.
Yeah.
It was pretty interesting, cause now they're all right in a row, you could question, put a question mark there on what your thoughts are.
Didn't we do that last year sometime?
Yeah, we did kind of look at that, district by district.
But not.
Yeah.
Not totally like this.
Yeah, this gives you the opportunity to, as you're focusing on the one district, kind of still being aware of what's going on in the other districts, and this also wraps in looking at residential districts, which you've never really gone through. Um, and I, I definitely have some concerns with some of the conditional uses in the residential districts.
But not just the businesses, this, this other chart is the same thing, only it talks about, you know, uses.
Yeah, these are all the accessory uses, yeah.
That's really interesting too.
And.
So if we, if we take R1 or R2, let's say, or R3 rather, and just go down both of them, and, and, and did that, and then came back and had a discussion, cause each of us could have put down, we think it ought to be eliminated, we think it ought to be changed, or it's okay, then we could have that discussion, we could, we could knock out two or three districts easy in an evening, and both with businesses and over in here, um, the permitted uses.
I'm good with that.
Otherwise, we'll, we'll just take one of these things and just follow it around like we did for half an hour and get nowhere. Whereas if we, if we did that at home, went down these lists, and put what, whether we agree or disagree, or whether maybe something should be added somewhere that it's not at, or a conditional use, like Andy said, should be taken out. It, I think it's more organized way to approach it, I mean, obviously, you're still gonna have a discussion, but at least we all are kinda on the same sheet of paper, so to speak. What do you think of that idea?
I think it's a great idea.
So, I mean, this, these are absolutely perfect for that purpose, you know? So. We, we just went through Capitol.
Let's pick some juicy ones.
Yeah. Which ones you wanna tackle first? For, for upcoming. Capitol, we just went through Capitol, but we didn't, we talked about it, but we didn't mark it yes, no, or maybe. So Capitol would certainly be a good one, right? What's another good one?
Bs and Cs.
Hmm?
Bs and Cs. B1, B2, BX and C.
B1, B2, BX and C?
Yeah.
For the next meeting?
Can we do four?
Can we do four?
I don't know. Really, just really, really pushing the limit there.
Well, you know what?
All right.
We could, we could get it done as a homework assignment, but could we get it through a meeting, I don't know?
I don't know.
But at least we'd be ready for it.
That's up to the next chairman.
Yes. He's sitting over there, we're gonna talk about that in a minute. Do you wanna tackle those four first?
Or pick two, I don't care.
That's a good suggestion, B1, B2.
They're kinda juicy to me.
BX and Capitol. And then between now and the next time, go down that list and, and, and put your personal preference if something.
Yeah, and, and I, I, I think you're, you're right on the money, uh, Rich, I think you're right on the money, and I think that, um, I, I would even prefer my, my more, I'm more concerned about ratcheting down the, the Cs than the Ps. You know, Ps are easy. But the C would be the one that I would, that those are the ones, those are the ones that have the potential of.
Yeah, they can bite you, but.
Yes.
There's some Ps that maybe shouldn't be Ps too.
Well, and that's fine, and those, but those are easy. It's the conditional ones that, 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 more of a concern to me, because.
Yeah, if you allow a conditional, you better define what the conditions are.
Well, and you better be ready to live with it. If you're gonna put it in there, you better be ready to live with it, because if they meet the conditions, then there's not a whole heck of a lot we can do.
Same. You wanna do four, or you wanna do more?
Now you're sounding worse than Hiram.
All right, let's do four, let's do.
Would, would it be difficult to ask to maybe look at some of the residential stuff too? I, I, I think we can get through the residential fairly quick.
I think the residential stuff is easy.
Yeah, so if you, if we can maybe try to.
R1 and R3, or? One, R1, R1, R3 and R4?
Sure.
I mean, six and eight really don't apply much.
Yeah, there's not a lot going on.
Cause they're just a couple neighborhoods.
Yeah, yeah.
We can go through those real easy.
Yeah.
So.
Cause I had some, you know, s- under the, the R1 and R4 districts, I did want you guys to take a look at those public and institutional uses that we have, which are conditional uses.
R3 too, Heather? Or just one and four? Those are the most active ones.
Yeah, really, the, I, I mean, we could look at three, I don't, I don't really have any.
R3 doesn't really have much.
Or anything for that.
Excuse me, there's not much in R, there's not a whole heck of a lot in R3, is there?
No.
No, R3's pretty, pretty bland.
Yeah, it's orange. Oh, you know what, those are the condo complexes.
Yeah, those are the multifamily districts with the, with the condos and.
The orange.
With agri- with agricultural use.
Yeah.
I know.
Well, and that, and that's something, you know, maybe Brady and I can have a follow-up conversation, you know, I know that we're allowed to regulate agricultural uses, I don't know that we're allowed to prohibit it from any zoning districts. So, if we're allowed to, maybe we can take it out of some of the districts where it just doesn't make sense or isn't desirable, but I, I don't know if we're allowed to completely say no to it in, in certain areas or not.
Sure.
Um, same thing like with the, what, like you were saying, the, um.
So when we go through.
Surface extraction of land.
Yeah.
Do we have to allow that, is that an ORC thing?
Right.
Maybe we can find out.
Yeah, I'd be interested in getting some legal, uh, counsel guidance on some of those.
Yeah.
To know what we can and can't do within the, this, within our purview.
Do we wanna tackle both lists, or just the, uh, permitted uses first of the businesses?
I did, P and, Ps and Cs.
You can do this one too, the accessory buildings.
Sure, why not?
In one assignment?
Throw it on the file.
Okay. Let's do R1, R4, B1, B2, BX and C.
Oh, gee.
See?
For accessory uses?
See what you started, Hiram?
Okay.
Yeah.
You opened the door.
Yeah, but at least I'm gonna get an answer on sand extraction.
Yes. Inquiry minds wanna know.
A few meetings ago, and I got shut down.
True.
So you're gonna continue through this memorandum?
Tonight?
Yeah.
Well, is it necessary if we're gonna go through it at home?
I think we ought to use it as a guide.
Yeah, we're just gonna say we can use it as a guide.
Yeah, that could be our guide when we do our, our listing.
I think that would be a great idea.
R3.
What do we do, B1, B2?
R1, R3.
R1.
Or R4 rather. R1, R4, B1, B2.
B1.
B2.
B2.
BX.
BX.
And C.
And C.
So there's six categories. All you have to do is go down the list and see what's listed today, and some are no brainers.
Some are no brainers.
Some are a little more difficult.
We should be good at that.
What?
No brainers.
I can do that well.
And then use, use this list that Heather gave us as a guideline.
That's right.
In doing your, in doing your list.
You got the latest map?
The map, yeah, you got the latest, everybody's got the latest map.
Feel free to touch base with me if you want to, in between meetings.
I'm coming in.
You're like, what, what were you thinking, why would you suggest that?
Hang out in your office for a while.
It's fine, I need to know where to find me.
And also the, the solar, um, devices, we have a handout on, and the, uh, also these, uh, accessory dwelling units. Which, I don't know, we have a category in there for that, do we? ADU?
No, we don't, yeah, that was.
And the solar, we touch on that, but and some of the zoning, didn't we touch on that about having outside antennas, I think I recall us discussing.
We had the satellite.
Yeah, satellite, not solar, okay.
But not the, not the.
So we're gonna have to add that, these are categories that are gonna have to be added if we, you know, gonna have, and, and obviously, this makes sense, both of them make sense. So, put that on your list too, to use as a review criteria. Heather, what were you thinking for number nine? Add, uh, electrical ve- vehicle charging station.
Oh, um, just listing that in there under the table of permitted accessory uses and referencing the trustee resolution that contains all the criteria that they adopted regarding level, or level two and three charging stations. Just kind of a, a check, a cross-reference between the trustee resolutions. If someone's just looking at the zoning resolution, they're not gonna know that these, these others separate.
So it gives them a heads up that.
Yeah, same thing about may- yeah, like, and I think I commented somewhere else too about maybe adding in that the other reference to the resolution where the trustees prohibited the.
Marijuana.
The marijuana facility, so we should probably just find the appropriate location just to reference that using the resolution.
And we don't have any restriction on charging stations in your personal garage.
Correct.
But, is that an issue from a fire standpoint, because you hear so many.
Sure is.
Things, until things get sorted out, I mean, vehicle touching on fire? That's why this is important for the one they did. But if you have it in your garage, it's your house, and your insurance, right?
I just saw something on the news today, I was reading an article where it was a major fire with a charging station in a building.
Yeah.
So it definitely poses a fire hazard.
Think about charging in your garage, and how well you'd sleep at night, knowing that that car's out there charging, you know? I have a neighbor that has three Teslas. Three of them.
But aren't those things usually put in by professional electricians?
Yeah, it does.
I mean, it has to be, cause your.
Oh, yeah, they are.
Your house has to be wired up for the two, you know, the high voltage.
Well, you can do it, 110 volt, but it takes forever.
Right.
So you wanna get that level, whatever they call it, charger.
Right.
Which is professionally installed.
Right.
And some of the auto companies were paying for that.
I was gonna say, when you bought the car.
Yeah. When you bought a car.
My neighbor got that for his garage, but it's all done by Tesla.
Okay. All right, so, uh, next meeting, we're gonna tackle those six categories, and, uh, kinda, everybody mark their list, and then we'll discuss it and see where we stand amongst each other. I think that kinda covers that topic for tonight, the other topic we need to discuss is the election for next year's officers. So, uh, if we follow the normal rotation, it would be Andy and, uh, Hiram, I think.
Yes.
Do I have a motion for, uh, the nomination for chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Andy as chairman.
On a second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor of Andy as chairman next year?
Aye.